At 7:04 PM, I'm getting in. First, I want to just welcome everybody to our main meeting of the Town and Milton Planning Board. Tina Blanchard, would you please call the attendance of the board so we can make sure we have a quorum here?
Mr. Mercicano?
Yeah?
Ms. Padula? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandingsa? Brenda Howe?
How? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Padula is not here?
Yes, Nancy's here.
Okay. And no Mr. Bianchi tonight?
No.
Okay, so we have Six and Chairman Bartow.
Yes. So we have a quorum, so we can begin. I'd also want to note that we have an attendance. Our Counsel Bill Ketterie, our Engineer Joel Bianchi, Director of Planning and Co. Bill Lewis, and Brenda Howe as the Clerk with her Assistant Amanda, all in as panelists, and we have some of the project applicants that I'll note in a minute. If we could have, Brenda's got the flag there, if we can just do a quick pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States, made to where, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, infinite, eternal. Okay. So, again, thank you all for joining us. It looks like we have 20 panelists, which is the correct number, because we've made all our project applicants and their agents as panelists as well, so they could either have video, but particularly audio involvement with the meeting. And we have, right now, 10 attendees, which is going to be, let me go through a little bit of protocol here, but this is our first meeting since the Code of 19, Corona virus has prevented us from meeting since our February meeting, so we missed March and April. And we're doing this for the first time via Zoom, which is the new format that the town is using for public meetings at this point. I'd ask everyone to just please bear with us as we adjust to the technology and the means of communicating. This virus has impacted everyone, including conducting our public business. And yet we're pleased to be back here, it's a whole new format and a whole new way of doing business here, so let's just, everybody, hopefully we will have the opportunity to be engaged as much as they possibly can. We have a couple of opportunities this evening for the public to interface with us, and I would ask that if you are Zooming and you want us to make, want to make a public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature. I don't see any other, there's no raising the hand or anything like that, so if you have a comment that you'd like to do, do the Q&amp;A. Brenda Howe, our Clerk, is keeping track of that stuff, and she will let us know as we have people that would like to comment. We'll ask you to state your name and address, as you normally would, and try to keep your comments to on three minutes. If you're calling him by phone, and particularly if you have a mobile phone, and you'd like to have a comment, we have Bill Lewis's cellphone number. You can text him, give him that number, it is 518-376-1831. Again, that's 518-376-1831. And if you provide Bill your name and the fact that you'd like to make a comment, he will make sure that he lets us know when you're ready to have a comment brought in. In April, Marco Bianco reached out to me, and he's been working like crazy to keep his construction business alive during this crisis. He's had to lay off his employees, he's doing all his work on his own, and given the demands of his business, he's indicated, first indicated, he might have to resign, but we've worked out with him to take a three-month break in hopes that he gets his business running again, he gets his employees back, and he has the opportunity to rejoin us as a board member. In the meantime, Nancy Padula, as our alternate, will be stepping up as a full-board participant for these three months. If you notice, she was on the board for another project last month as an alternate when Marco was here, and John Lynda Whittle was out, but she'll be participating tonight as a full-board member, and we expect so through August. So, that is what's happening there. In terms of correspondence, I've shared with you all correspondence regarding the Hutchey Road Plan Development District Stormwater Plan. Based, there's a memo 40120 from Joel Bianchi regarding some changes to the final submission of the stormwater plan, and a equal second letter from Bill Lewis to Tom Samiscott approving a five-acre waiver from some of the stormwater provisions that they have there. If anybody has any questions on that, Bill Lewis can address those, but it's pretty standard procedures, they're just trying to get some things done and started over there. And does anybody have any question on that? If not, I'm, we're now next at the approval of the minutes from our February 19th, 2020 meeting. Everybody should have a copy of those minutes. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve the February 19th, 2020 planning board minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Make Steven's.
I second that.
Chairman. And Collins. Any discussion or changes for the board regarding the February minutes? If not, Tina, please pull the board. Tina? Did we lose Tina? You may have to order your person to call.
I'm here, sorry. Okay, Mr. Mercicano?
Yes.
Mr. Blom. I can't hear Ms. Padula.
There you are.
Okay, Ms. Padula?
What?
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandingsa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
I'm muted, John? I think he said yes.
Okay, and Chairman Bartow?
Yes. Okay, well, next we're going to go to public comment, and this will be our first time doing this. Again, if you have comments that you'd like to do to us, please put a Q&amp;A in. And I see some, I don't see any public comments coming in there. If anyone's on the phone, if you want to text Bill Lewis, his number is 518-376-1831. Bill, did you get it? Yeah?
If you look at your participants?
Yeah.
If you go to your, are they attendees, some of them might have a hand up. That means that's.
I have not seen a hand there, right?
I do not have any text messages at this point, John.
The only thing I see, Chairman, is three items at the Q&amp;A section.
Did you hear me, Brenda? Did you hear me when I said there's no messages?
Yeah, yes, we did. Yeah, and these were just comments from Nancy and John Munter being able to get in, and I believe we've answered those.
Good.
We don't have any public comments, so with that, hopefully we won't run into the same situation as we go forward into the public hearing. All right. I don't see anybody. Would we see it on the participant list, a hand raised if they wanted to say something?
Yes, you would have, you would have seen, not down here.
On the participant hall?
Yeah, if you had the attendees open on the other side.
Yeah.
If somebody had their hand up, it would show up there.
Okay.
It would be next to their name, right?
Yes.
And I have not seen that. I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna check using a friend of ours, Mary Ann Becker. Mary Ann, oh, I see it. Back as where is their hand?
Yeah.
They haven't asked. I've asked them, not you.
It's Amanda, I was just checking.
Okay, so there were no questions, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, let's go to our next meeting, our next agenda item, which is the public hearing for the Boyhaven Munter subdivision. The site plan and special use permit. So there's three actions that we're approving here. Mr. Munter is building the subdivision of about 69 acres of the Boyhaven parcel, involving mostly the two pond area and most of the permits that had buildings on it for the purposes of conveying the parcel to a corporation for the operation reuse summer camp. It addicted to, this requiring a minor subdivision approval, and also is a use in the R2 zoning district that requires a special use permit and site plan approval. Finally, there are definitional conflicts in our zoning code regarding camps, dwelling units, and the definition of a family, which have caused the proposed use in construction of the bunk cabins to obtain a use variance with the zoning board of appeals. We will, we are coordinating our review of the subdivision special use permit and site plan with a parallel use variance with the zoning board of appeals. I've communicated with Meg Souten as Chair of the ZBA regarding this coordination with the planning board serving as lead agency under the Seeker. We have poked it on the web, our website of the town. We've also created a Dropbox, and everyone should have up to, I believe we're now at the 19 documents that are in there regarding applications for the three approvals that we've had, and the required submissions that Mr. Munter has given us. At our February board meeting, we passed a motion to declare the Munter-Boyhaven Minor Subdivision Special Use Permit and Site Plan Review and Use variance as unlisted actions pursuant to Seeker. Munter did present his project for variance to the zoning board of appeals on February 26, and the ZBA is proceeding with their review. At the February meeting, we determined that we did not have a complete application on which to make a determinative significance, but we did try to schedule a public hearing for March, on the condition that Mr. Munter provide us that information. However, the March meeting was canceled due to the COVID-19 coronavirus, and at the direction of the Town Board, we did not have the meeting, nor again in April. But we're here tonight, and we'll be getting ready to open the hearing, but I first ask, Mr. Munter, do you have any presentation for the board?
I am happy to have all you people together in this very unusual situation. Since I did my initial presentation in February, I probably should give you a brief overview of what I presented then. Basically, I'm trying to take a 290-acre parcel that was formerly a Boy Scout camp that serviced anywhere from 200 to 250 Boy Scouts a week during the summer months, and then they add a much smaller contingency during the winter months in winter camp. I understood from John that since they ceased operation, I think it was 2017, enough time has passed, so that it cannot be transferred into another children's camp. That's why I'm here tonight. I have a group where I subdivided 69 acres of the 290-plus acres. The 69 acres, including most of the major buildings that encompass the Boy Scout camp, as well as the two ponds that are on the property for use as a children's camp. In going through this in my February meeting, I answered a number of questions, but briefly, this summer camp would be having approximately 150 children per week during the summer months, and it would be a seasonable camp. I think once they come on board, they're going to reach out to the community and offer this property for some community uses during their off-seasons. I think I mentioned all this in the February presentation. I think, following my February presentation, I did get some notes back. One from our town engineer who had commented, but I did not get those comments in time for my February meeting. He had a few comments on both the short environmental assessment form. I think he had specifically two concerns. He noticed I hadn't gone on what they call BEC mapers to analyze two points. One was the archaeological sites on the property. And number two, there was a concern about the northern Indiana bath on the property. I went back after my February meeting, reviewed these. It turns out the BEC is a radius map that's centered on our neighboring town of Springfield. That radius does sweep briefly into my area. And I investigated what our disturbance could mean to the bath. I didn't really understand what Mary was explaining. There were two concerns. One, baths tend to hibernate into diseased trees. And also in, uh, building, certain buildings. When it came to the trees, we did disturb some trees based on a preliminary permit I got from Bill Lewis. That I will not get, I will not get the SEO on this until we've gone through all our applications for putting in two new septic systems and four cabins of this. The only area that was confused, that was flooded by any trees, was one septic system, which had about six or seven fresh pine tree gardens. And these were healthy trees, so it was really no concern to the Indiana bath hibernation. The buildings were not doing much to them. There are no deliveries on the buildings, so I still don't know them. Yeah. The other question he had was on archaeological questions on the site. And there are no, on the major portion, I think he was concerned mostly about the 1830 house stands on the property. There are no archaeological associations with the house. Somewhere south, we're only taking up there a very small portion of the southern part of the land, the high ground, but there may be some old foundation on the Teneras Creek that may or may not have some concerns, but it does not include this minor stuff. So I think we pretty well answered your question. I think there were a few other questions asked. I did mention in the February meeting that our Phase 1 is not involving renovation of the house in order to get this children's camp included in motion. That will be coming up in the future. And we had a very tight schedule getting this camp in order for this season, and that's why I went, got building permits, knowing full well that if the board disagreed with these, that it would be my responsibility. As I've already said, it turns out it's unlikely the children's camp will have attendance this summer, but the completion is going to be pulled forward. And I think shortly after I get through the planning board and the zoning board approval, you will see an announcement that the children's camp is sustaining their total application over the next couple of years. I know I've carried on here, so I think I've given you pretty much what I did in the February presentation, but I'm happy to address any additional comments that board members may have.
Okay, thank you, John. So we'll ask for some comments here first, but at first I'd like to go to Bill Lewis. Do you have any items that you want to discuss in the project with the board?
No, at this time, we've issued a building permit for renovations on multiple buildings, which is just a basic building permit. We've done inspections on it. We've also done inspections on the wastewater systems, which were installed and permitted. They're permitted by the Department of Health for camps. The department, Mr. Munter's engineer was on-site at the same time I was doing the field inspections, and that's pretty much where we stand on it. We've been working with Mr. Munter to try to get his renovations done and keep this project going.
Okay. Joel Bianchi is the engineer. Do you have any comments you want to address to the board?
No, not necessarily. We issued our comment letter on May 11th, which I believe is shared with Mr. Munter and the rest of the board has it. It covers Seeker, covers the special use permit criteria, the subdivision power plant, and the site plan. If the board has any specific questions about our review, we can certainly answer it, but wasn't intending on going over anything specific per se.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions or comments that you want to? No questions or comments from the board at this point.
Okay, so I'd like to thank Mr. Munter for hanging in there for this particular time. You know, so thank you very much and working with us on our delays that we had on getting our meetings in place. Thank you.
Any other board members at this point? There are not being any questions from the board. We got a couple of Seeker things to do. We have not really done any Seeker on this at this point, so the first thing is, I would entertain a motion to declare the Munter-Boyhaven Minor Subdivision Site Plan Review Approval and Special Use Permit for a summer camp as an unlisted action pursuant to Seeker. Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
Who gave the motion?
I don't think anybody, I'll make the motion.
Next, Steven's second, okay. Any discussion on Seeker unlisted action? If not, pull the board, Tina?
Mr. Mercicano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula? Mr. Collins? Ms. Vandingsa?
Yes.
Were you able to hear me? My comment was yes.
Mr. Collins, thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. With that, at this point, the board had any questions regarding the completeness of the application for the special use permit, site plan, or subdivision approval? There will be no questions from the board on that. We need a motion, entertain a motion declaring, oh wait, let's step back. We're making the short environmental assessment form with this. It's the short forms, but there are 11 questions that come here. So I'll read them, and if any, I'll give a moment pause, and if anybody has something to change, let me know, and we'll discuss it further. So the first question, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? I've checked, small impact or minor? Second question, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land? I said no or small impact or minor. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? I've checked no, small or minor. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways? I've checked no, small impact or minor. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate any reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I've checked no, small impact or minor. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment? I've checked no, small impact or minor. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, or architectural or aesthetic resources? I've checked no, small impact or minor. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air body, flora, and fauna? I've checked no, small impact or minor. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? I've checked no, small or minor. An 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? I've checked no, or minor. There's no further comments on the impact assessments. I will have a, entertain a motion declaring that based on the impact assessment and supporting documentation, that the Munter-Boyhaven Minor Subdivision Site Plan and Special Use Permit for a summer camp will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. I have a motion. I'll make that motion. Can I have a second? Tina, please pull the board.
Mr. Mercicano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. Okay. Now, with Seeker out of the way, do I have a motion to open a public hearing for the Munter-Boyhaven Minor Subdivision Special Use Permit and Site Plan?
I'll make the motion.
Who jumped first?
I'll let Meg have it.
Brenda, do I have a second?
Either, either Meg or me, whatever.
Next, Steven's, okay. Pull the board, please, Steven.
Mr. Mercicano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandingsa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes. Okay, so with that, we will open the subdivision special use permit and site plan review applications to the public for comment. Again, I'd ask anybody who wanted to address the board to use the Q&amp;A function, which I don't see anything there right now, or to text Bill Lewis at 518-376-1831. Anybody wish to address the board on this project, public hearing? Anybody wish to address the board on this project, public hearing? Bill, any texts?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Cattery, are you satisfied we've given the public ample opportunity to respond?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So if there's no further public comments, a motion to close the Munter Boyhaven Public Hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion to close.
Mr. Collins, a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Marscano? Does the board have any other discussion, comments, questions before we go ahead to consider the applications? Any other comments? Okay, I am going to do this in three motions. Correct, Mr. Cattery?
Yes, and I would ask those chairmen specifically with respect to the special permit application that board members state their reasons, that board will recall that the section of the ordinance that we're operating under does require findings.
Now, with that, okay, so I'm going to look to try to find a document here, but in the meantime, I will entertain a motion to approve the Minor Subdivision dated December 20th, 2019. I believe that's the correct map reference. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Can you pull the board while I search for something here?
Mr. Marscano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandingser?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes.
All right, so we have the approval for the Minor Subdivision. Can I, do I have a motion to approve the Munter Boyhaven Site Plan dated 5/5/20?
Chairman, I'd make the motion to approve that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If not, pull the board.
Mr. Marscano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandingser?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes.
Okay, now, moving to the special use permit for a camp to be operated by camp stopping ground for a seasonal children's camp with a maximum capacity of 150 children at one time, subject to the approval of a use variance by the Town and Milton Zoning Board of Appeals. And let me state some of the background that we're discussing on the standards to approve. Well, actually, let me get a motion for the approval of the special use permit.
I'll make that motion.
Next, Stevens.
I'll second it.
Okay, for the purposes of discussion, let me put forth the conditions and findings that we're putting in here. The first is with respect to the public health, safety, and general welfare and the comfort and convenience of the public in general and the neighborhood and specific conditions and objectives. The public health, safety, and welfare as well, the comfort and convenience of the neighborhood will not be adversely affected upon the project, so as long as the conditions are properly complied with by the applicant under the town code. Consideration of these factors is across the board to conclude that subject real property has a long and well-known history, and the use and manner is now being proposed as a camp. Today, the use of the camp has ceased, and while in recent years, the real property has been actively used for this being a purpose, the fact does not change the widely known accepted that the premise is uniquely situated and proved for a children's camp thereon. Property conditions, two ponds, a lake, and one lake shall be used for swimming, the other shall be used for paddling. Its location in the close proximity of Middle Grove State Forest and the Catarasa Creek without significant adjacent or surrounding residential development make it ideal site situated for a summer camp for children. Thus, impacts of any regard in the posture and nature are rather negative, and no facts have been presented to the board, causing it to conclude resumption of the intended camp will cause or create any adverse impact on public health, safety, general welfare, or the community. Allowing children to enjoy and experience this outdoors is a substantial positive attribute to the proposed project. In order to comply with SEACER, the planning board has conducted and completed a coordinated review as lead agency with the Milton Zoning Board of Appeals. All SEACER proceedings and terminations have been made by the lead agency to this end. The ZBA is now pending before its application for relief, and the relief sought is to such use variance pertaining to this particular definitions relative to the camp contained within the town code. While the terms of this resolution may be inconsistent with the environmental assessment form, the resolution shall not be controlling. Operations, the applicant has presented that the seller of the real property prepared this parcel to camp stopping ground, who intend to construct a summer camp and some additional bunking facilities that are there. He's believed that he is, the total parcel is of 297 acres. The applicant seeks to subdivide 68.4, just 169 acres from the whole. Children's summer camp will be operated on the parcel of 69 acres in general, the present proposed use for the applicant's by lease or other means for a nonprofit children's organization to operate it as a summer camp, where about three-quarters of campers will pay a fee for the experience of being at the camp. There is some indication that the camp could operate in conjunction with town-sponsored activities, however, the details are not yet known. The proposed use plan is in harmony with the orderly development of the district. Use is consistent with the historical use of the property. The applicant has proposed four additional units, which are anticipated to house 100 and more campers and staff. That the property also includes an existing home known as the White House, which is not being approved for any redevelopment or improvement at this time, but may well have redevelopment or improvement, subject to our appropriate codes when they choose to do that. There's no sidewalks that have been put onto the site. Building improvements incurred on the property right now are all minor and within code, including upgrading of the dining room facilities, an activity center, a bathhouse, four new cabins presented on the property. There'll be improvements and rehabilitations over a phase period with the plan and the establishment, but the operation of the camp represents an investment enhancement that is in keeping with the existing use and character of the community and district. There has been no showing of significant additional trips generated associated with the intended use. There should not be additional camper traffic, as they will be delivered and picked up from the site. So too will be the delivery of supplies and items that are ordinary and custom to the use. Staff will not likely travel to and from the premises on a daily basis, but rather less frequently and more concentrated before the camp arrives and after departure. Adequate safe and handicap accessible parking is to be provided on the site. Landscape in the site will significantly be more actively maintained. Approval will result in the return from a dormant state of lack of condition to an active use. The location at Boyhaven Road, a town road, and a Butts US 529 in Middle Grove Road is well-known and easily accessible to emergency medical services and other life safety responders. Sound and lighting, the planning board has considered lighting and sound from the use in relationship to the site and its location, the relative neighbors for potential impacts, if any, it would be imperceptible. The applicant has also represented the operation will be quiet after 9:30 PM, seasonally cease operations at the end of the month of September or October. The rehabilitation of buildings and construction of the four additional cabins will be in keeping with the character associated with the use. There's no town center guidance provided here. Best management practices for streams and other natural resources are being considered, and there'll be no adverse impact on natural features. The planning board has considered some of the following specific design standards, that minimum lot area of 15 acres, if the proposed 68.4 acres is suitable for the use that's intended. Cabin shall be designed for the definitions appropriate in the zoning ordinance and the variance that may be issued thereon. The applicant has represented that he's in the process of getting that. Net density shall not exceed four dwelling units per acre. All units shall be served by community water and common sewage disposal system, all of which shall be continually in satisfactory control and operated as permitted by the New York State Department of Health and Department of Environmental Conservation. The applicant has submitted a design of septic system, as well as newly designed water systems prepared by a licensed water treatment operator. There's no new well to be drilled. No building, recreation facility, or other activity shall be located within 100 feet of a lot line. Open spaces are set aside and maintained for recreational purposes. So those are the findings that the board makes. There's some proposed conditions here that I'll read over, that in accordance with a letter dated May 11th, 2020 by the town engineer Joel Bianchi, the applicant must address and satisfy the planning board terms, which I think we've all seen and heard, no additional terms to be met with today. Obtain the use variance from the Milton Zoning Board of Appeals on or before October 31st, The applicant shall act and cause its agents and engineers, leasing those control of possessions and occupants of the property, that none of the existing or additional internal railway systems shall be blocked or repeated, shall at all times be maintained as permit, continuous safe access for responders, including but not limited to fire, EMS, and regulatory or law enforcement personnel. Permits on alteration or construction of anything else on the property shall be undertaken with first obtaining the written approval of the Town and Milton Zone Code Enforcement Officer concerning the White House 1830. Any other structure to potentially have a possible historic significance should be taken into consideration. Maintain compliance with all laws, ordinances, codes, rules, and regulations set forth in Section 18042 of the Town Code to pursuant to a camp operation. And that the applicant or subsequent owner shall apply periodically to renew special use permit approval in accordance with Section 18046 of the Town Code. Honor before the expiration of five years from the date of this resolution and periodic intervals thereafter as determined by the planning board, inconsistent. That in addition, this special use permit is being given to camp stopping ground for the purposes of operating the camp as outlining this approval for 150 campers on a seasonal basis from roughly June through October, with the possible use outside of those periods by some public purposes that the camp may authorize. In the event that the camp should change ownership or intended use from what's granted in this special use permit, they would have to come back and obtain an additional special use permit at that time. And that the site plan subdivision approval dated, let me go back, what we have those dates from earlier, I think the site plan was 5/5/20, and the subdivision approval And those are the conditions. Does the board have any questions about the findings or conditions? If not, can we pull the board on the approval of a special use permit for camp stopping ground to be operated as seasonally used June to October, capacity of 150 children, subject to the approval variance by the Town and Milton Zoning Board of Appeals?
Mr. Marscano?
Yes, I think it's an ideal use of the property, consistent with its previous use, also considering that the facility may be available to the public in the near term.
Ms. Padula?
I'm sorry, I could not hear Ms. Padula.
We can hear your faintly, hear your voice on.
Anyway, I said yes. I'm satisfied with the applicant's information that he presented. I'm satisfied with it, and the board will feel that.
Mr. Collins?
I would say that the applicant's own proposed presentation and documentation would support a yes vote from me. I think it's for the better of our community, and my vote is yes.
Ms. Vandingser?
Yes, I support making Boyhaven again available to children. I think our community has always been welcoming to children, especially summer recreation. And again, I think it is ideal that eventually there'll be partnership with our town to open up that space for the community, and so my vote is a yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, I think it's a great use of the property. I think John's ideas were well-presented, and I'm very pleased that it's going to be used by children again, children from our community and children outside our community.
Mr. Whittle?
I move yes, and that's because the property was previously used as a boy scout facility and is now going to be used for a children's camp, which is well in line with how it's been used for many decades, and will continue in that use.
Chairman Bartow?
Yes, I've said enough about findings and conditions. So, well, with that, congratulations, Mr. Munter. Congratulations to camp stopping ground. We're anxious to meet them at some point in the future. Anything else you'd like to say to the board?
Well, thank you for your time. You will get to meet them very quickly. I think they've anxiously been waiting for these approvals, and you'll be able to meet them in person within a month or two.
Great. You are welcome to continue to stay involved in the meeting if you'd like. You're also welcome to leave if you'd like, but we're done with this stage of the agenda at this point. Okay, so, moving on to our next project, we are moving to the Belmonte Special Use Permit for a storage facility and tent rental business. If everyone recalls, we last reviewed this project on January 9th. We had several questions regarding the special use permit and proposed use of their pole barn being constructed on the property for what may have appeared to be for storage and operations of a tent rental business. We asked at January's meeting that the Belmontes provide us with a detailed description of exactly what they were proposing to do with their property and specifically what the use of the pole barn may be for. They made it clear that they were applying for a special use permit for a home occupation two under Section 181 of the Milton Zoning Code. We also detailed remaining site plan review requirements and building co-compliances that we needed prior to scheduling a public hearing for the review of the project. As you can see what I've provided and we've posted on the website, there have been 16 documents filed with this application. I just want to point out some of the more recent ones that are going on right now, including an amended special use permit for a pole barn home occupation two function dated March 6th, 2020, a new agricultural data statement, a new short environmental assessment form for the Belmonte Septic System Design prepared by John Romano of Insight Northeast dated May 11th, 2020. Northeast dated May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, a Belmonte site plan dated May eleventh, two thousand and twenty, an erosion and sediment control plan dated May eleven, two thousand and twenty, as well as a letter and whiteboard from Richard and Nancy Schultes dated May twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Everything else was previously submitted. This evening, we'll continue our review of the Belmonte application for a special use permit for a home occupation two, including a site plan review and approval in association with the tent rental business and their accessory pole barn. I'd ask that the applicant or agent come forth to speak, and I believe we have on this project with us Terry Belmonte, as well as...
Mr. Romeo.
Mr. Romeo, I believe is here. I thought I saw him on here. So, Louis, do you, let me start with her. Would Miss Belmonte or Mr. Romeo care to address the board at this point?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me and see me this evening?
Yes, John, okay.
All right, this is Jerry too. It's great to meet all of you. I'm here representing the project this evening. Mr. Tui, the attorney for the project, is unable to attend. He does send his regards, and I have spoken with him prior to the meeting to ensure that his wishes are conveyed. Since this project, since we were involved with this project, I'll just kind of give you a little bit of background about ourselves, our involvement. We were initially retained to design a septic system, and then we were brought in and completed a march application with a limited site plan. Mr. Berthold, Mr. Chairman, we did receive your letter following that, and through several conversations with the town and Bill Lewis, we revised that site plan and provided an updated submission dated the May eleventh, which has a significantly improved site plan. It has the SWIP, and it has details that essentially go through everything that has been constructed on the site, everything that is proposed, as well as all the requirements in that letter that was provided. Now, if you would like, I can go through everything that was there, otherwise I would just highlight the main items that were clarified. The first of which is the limits of disturbance. We did clarify that we are over one acre of disturbance, but less than five acres, considering that this is going for a home occupation two. We are considering this as a residential disturbance, not requiring post-construction stormwater management. But we did provide a detailed SWIP document that went through the erosion sediment control practices that would be required on the site and that had been provided. We also included with the application the grading plan, showing where the outdoor storage is, showing the approximate grades on the site with the one-foot contours, and as well as the screening locations that we have proposed across the site to try to limit the view shed from Galway Road and Middle Line Road with regards to the project site. The only outdoor storage that I've been made aware of that's permitted is the outdoor propane storage area, which is located to the north of the proposed building, that will be screened in and provided with a above-ground block wall along the border that you would see from the road. So, the outdoor storage will be screened from the roadway, with the remaining side of it enclosed with a fence or screened from the building itself. There is a access to the site provided from Galway Road that will be the primary entrance to the site. Through exit, a fire access is provided through the site to Middle Line Road, should it be required. That is shown in the plans that here shown, and we do have adequate turn movements to access the site for emergency vehicle needs if that came to pass. Included in this as well, we did include a limited building plan with this, although we did not view our plans as showing the complete construction of the building itself. We did include the approximate square footage with the use of the building itself, with the storage area, the kitchen area, the utility room, and the showroom, along those areas for use by the board. Included in that plan, you can see where the entry doors are and where the overhead lights are, as well as all of the parking spaces that we have provided, including one handicap accessible space for the building. Now, the lights that are provided for the building were off-the-shelf lights. I did supply the bottle blubber for them. They are approximately three to four thousand lumens. They will be downward facing. We do not anticipate any light spillage off the property. I know that that is something that we can continue to discuss with the Belmontes. We believe that this would only really be in operation while people are there or motion-activated. They will not be continuously on all night to try to, you know, pose an impact to nearby residents or passersby's on cars. We want to try to have this blended with the neighborhood as much as we can. Lastly, as I had mentioned, in the initial submission, we did design a septic system for this project site. It has been installed and inspected, and we have a has-been plan that's actually included as part of this set, and there was a well that was installed on the site that is detailed. We have sufficient separation between all of those items, and we feel that the site plan is now sufficiently complete and fully addressed, it's all of the items that the board has required, with one exception, and that is something that Mr. Bill Lewis and I have discussed, that is regarding the signage for the site. Initially, when we provided this document, we were not including any site signage. My understanding with the applicant is that we are not including any site signage right now, but if site signage were to be included, everything would be done with accordance with the town's standards. We understand that we would have to come for a special sign permit for that application, but right now, there is no plan for a sign on the road for this building.
Bill Lewis, do you have any additional comments for us at this point in time?
Other than I received an interior floor plan layout of the building, talked to the Belmontes in regards to getting me information on the insulation, which is in the building. We did an insulation inspection, and that's pretty much where we're at. We're waiting to get back in. Obviously, right now, it's under the permit stages, so it's under construction and not finished, and we have to do the final inspections in order to give them approval to occupy.
So, I just want to start off with two points that I want to make sure that we're all clear on here. One, with respect to what Bill just told us about some of the interior things, structural building code types of requirements, be it for insulation or structures that are interior, are really not subject to the site plan or special use permit that's being granted here, other than they would be in relationship to whatever, if any, special use we do allow. But those are really strictly building code issues at this point. And the second being that the barn itself has been permitted and determined by the building department to be within the bulk area and intensity regulations of the building code. So, we are not reviewing the barn itself. What is really before us is a special use permit for the tent rental business that would be going on to it. So, we're reviewing the use and not so much the structure, because that's been determined to be a permitted use under ours owning bulk area regulations. So, I think we just need to be very clear about to the public and to ourselves that what we're doing here. That doesn't mean that we don't have some elements of screening and what layouts of exterior features that are there, but the barn itself is a permitted structure in this zoning district. So, with that, I'll entertain any comments that the board has on both the special use permit or the site plan that is before us.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yeah, can I comment?
I believe I touched on this topic before, and I don't have my notes, but taking into consideration the special use, is there a sunset of the duration of the special use permit? Does that carry through to potentially change of ownership of the land and/or facility? Or is it subject to review on a special condition based on a timeframe?
I'll let Bill, Henry, clarify for me if I get this wrong, but generally speaking, the special use permit runs with the land. So, depending on the scope of the permit that we approve, it continues on. If we say this is a special use permit for a tent rental business occupying blah blah blah, then that can run on. If the use changes, that could be not, you know, considered granted under the issuance of the special use permit. Somebody has to come back to us. In terms of timeframes, just as we did with the Boy Haven special use permit, we could require these intervals of review, just to make sure that the use continues to be operating in that which we approved. But generally speaking, it was with the land, based on the conditions and terms we set. Is that correct, Henry?
Correct in both regards, Pat. Just to make it clear, the section of the town code does specifically provide that the town planning board may require in its resolution of approval that a special use permit be renewed periodically. Okay, so that's number one. There is a control with respect to time. And then, with respect to the second aspect of your question, the law on that is that with respect to a prior, if you will, special permit or special use permit, the only way that it continues on is if a special permit that was originally granted does not substant- and there's a change, that there's not a substantial intense change in the intensity of the use. So, the subsequent use has to be consistent with the underlying use, otherwise that later owner would have to come before you. So, if there's a change, and a substantial change in the intensity of the use, Pat, then they would have to come back, otherwise it will continue. If it's of the same character, it continues.
So, it would not be reasonable to say a five-year review of that special use permit that would not be legal or reasonable?
You have certainly precedent here in the town that I'm aware of, where you have specifically applied a five-year period.
And again, I'm using hypothetically five years. I'm just using an interval of time, per se, and I'm not locked into that. I'm hypothetically an interval of time where our special use permit that we, as a board, could approve or not approve, but in the spirit of an approval, let's say, we could have a review time, would that be reasonable? Would that be legal?
Hundred percent legal. There's no question that the town code does provide for that, and the only way, just so that the applicant has a sense of confidence going forward, a special permit that's been properly granted and that properly used doesn't just extinguish automatically at the end of the five-year period.
Correct.
An applicant relies on it, so the only way that it would be withheld in terms of a renewal is after a public hearing, and this planning board would have to make a specific determination that the conditions that were put on that special permit are not being abided by or were no longer being complied with. So, you know, generally speaking, it's thought of as something that continues if an applicant abides by the conditions that a board, such as this planning board imposes.
So, that would, it would make it more cumbersome to make that review process involved?
No, it's less burdensome on an applicant. To some extent, it's more automatic, if you will, that they will obtain the renewal absent some material change in circumstance or a violation of a condition.
Okay, thank you.
Add to that, that there is a provision or zoning code that should the special use discontinue for a period of one year or more, it automatically extinguishes.
Okay.
So, ergo, why we did it at Boy Haven is it had been down for three years, and that use been grandfathered, it was gone.
Yes, sir.
After one year.
Okay, thank you.
So, the biggest thing to be focused on is what we are actually granting here. We can grant conditions that take into consideration both the actual use, as well as other conditions that might be intended to that use, such as screening or times of operation, whatever we decide to put down as conditions has to be complied with. As long as they're compliant with those, that use and those conditions run with the land.
Chairman Berthold?
Yes.
There is a Q and A. It looks like Nancy Cadilla lost her internet connection. She does have it back now, but if you can address that question for her.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let me find her here again. I'm not seeing Nancy on the...
She says it's back, but I don't see, she says, "I don't see myself on video." She can see and hear you. Do you need to answer?
I know. She's an attendee, that's why.
Oh, okay, hold on. She's an attendee.
You have to move her. I don't see myself either, but I like it that way.
Yeah, well, okay, now she should be coming on. And I'm asking her to unmute. Nancy, are you there?
Yes, bye-bye, thank you.
Okay, and if you could turn your video on. Okay, any other questions for the board?
Chairman Berthold, I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Is there any screening on the east side adjacent to the barn? And if so, should that be on the site plan?
There is some screening. It's on the east side, or there's a couple trees on the east side of the property. If you look kind of the middle of the building, by the top right corner of the building, there are two trees.
Tell us which plaque you're looking at.
Sure, absolutely. Drive number C one thirty, that's the layout and grade plan. There are two trees shown to the north. If you look at the top right corner of the building, there are two trees shown by the driveway. There's an existing tree line that's along that property line too, but we have not proposed trees along that fire pocket.
Should those trees be on the site plan, though, to ensure they stay there?
Those two trees are on the site plan.
No, no, you're saying the existing trees.
Understood. We can certainly provide that to show a tree line.
Can you explain the rest of the plantings that you have on C one thirty, John Romano?
Yes, I'm gonna actually have everybody navigate to C one forty. That's the actual landscaping plan. There we have it.
Brenda, if you can bring that up, I'd encourage you to do that, and we'll take the opportunity to...
All right. So, we are proposing all kind of first trees for this, Norway spruce, white spruce, and eastern white pine. These are all generally fast-boned trees. They're very hardy, they are native to the area, and they will be the best tree to provide screening. While we could provide a mix of hardwood and softwood in this area, if our purpose is screening for this project site, we feel that proposing the evergreen trees is going to be in everybody's best interest, rather than more of a deciduous tree that has more maintenance associated with it and provides no screening in the winter months. C one forty, yes, right there.
I don't know if you can zoom that in, Brenda, that'd be great. I know I'm asking for a lot.
Zoom out a little.
Or just slide it over, there you go. So, what I'm seeing here is you're seeing to the northeast side of the building, to the right side, the driveway too, will look to be white spruce being planted there, as well as to the left side of the building, there being new white spruce. And then, a line of trees along the Boston Galway Road, which will be to the south of everything here, from the driveway heading west, a mixture of Norway spruce, white spruce, and eastern white pine. and eastern white pine. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what will these tree sizes be roughly as their plan?
Five-foot planting height. Typically with the evergreen trees, we typically specify planting height rather than a caliber with this. So we were planning on proposing a five-foot planting height for all of these trees.
Does the board have any other additional questions at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I would just make the statement that from my interpretation of that property, that would be historically a fence line and/or pasture fence line from what were agriculture or equine historic uses.
Anybody else have any other comments at this point?
Mr. Chairman, do they have a simulation of what it might look like and how long it might take to grow in five feet? Isn't that that tall in relationship to the building itself? And it looks like there's one line of trees, or do I interpret that planting schedule incorrectly?
So I can jump in here if you don't mind to answer some of it. So we do have a single row of trees along some of the Galway Road. If you'll notice, towards the corner of the property, towards that southwest corner, we have two rows of trees in that area. And that was purposely done to try to provide some additional screening for the intersection with Middle Line Road, whereas from that area, that was kind of our weakest spot with vegetation. We have not put together a rendering of what this would look like, but there are existing trees, that there is an existing tree line that is shown there along Galway Road in front. They're kind of brushy trees, but they do exist, they have not been cut down. So this would supplement them along that portion of the property with regards to vegetation heights and how fast they will grow. It's typical that we expect some of these evergreen plantings, once they establish, again, that first year is kind of a shock year. We don't expect them to grow much that first year, maybe two years. After that, 12 to 18 inches a year should be fairly typical for these trees in their young stage. So we don't think it would should take too many years to kind of fill in and provide a nice buffered area for view. And because they're all natural species, we think that it will blend in with the general environment.
And you're putting the trees how far apart?
Generally, if they're-
They're 10 feet or so?
Generally between 10 and 15 feet would be our recommendation. So again, that way when they're mature, they can fill in rather than being choked on each other. If they're planted too tightly together, when they get to mature size, they'll be a little bit more diseased. We're not trying to plant like an oval by the hedgerow with this that will attract deer. They provide great screening, absolutely, but they attract deer and it's not necessarily a natural look. By planting the trees like this, you know, over a few years when they grow in, it really provides a better natural buffer.
Does anybody have any additional comments, particular to the screening or planting plan or to the operation of the use itself?
I have one more question on the block there. Is that just a cinder block or what kind of block is that for your, I guess it would be your propane barrier kind of looking device?
Yes.
Where are you saying that, John? Can you reference the plaque?
Northwest corner of the building, John.
Right.
So-
propane storage area, okay.
Yes. Those are first pile wall blocks. I was discussing with the applicant that he has a stockpile of these types of blocks. They are an interlocking style block that is meant for applications such as this, to provide a, you know, an integral system rather than just being a concrete block. They are integrated with the, with each other to provide a structural wall. We are not, I removed the further detail on this, but they are actually meant to be used with a backfill area for, so you can have a structural retaining wall here. That is their primary purpose. We have a detail, detail nine, which is 501, that kind of shows what they look like with some dimensions. And this was the size that I was informed that they have, the level, they're a two-by-two-by-two block, so they are fairly heavy. Because they integrate together, they, you know, it's stronger than just a concrete block that sits on top of each other.
You said that was 501, John?
C-501, that is correct.
Could we pull that one up?
Okay.
Okay, that's what your section nine was intended to show? I guess I just didn't understand that when I reviewed it.
Yes, the whole, the C-501, the detail nine, that's what that is showing. Correct.
Okay.
So that propane storage, that is the only exterior storage that the applicant is considering at all?
As far as I'm aware, yes, that is the only permanent storage outdoor area.
So any of the temporary storage that's there now will be eliminated as soon as the building is done.
As far as I'm aware, the outdoor storage that's there now is for construction purposes
What is the intent for the storage and parking of business vehicles?
Those are provided along the south side of the building. That is the primary area for any visitors to the site and for the employees to the site. We do have, obviously, a lot more parking on the site, but we tried to minimize this as much as we could for the number of employees that they will have and for just the one or two visitors that they anticipate at any one time. There is a small showroom, but again, primarily this is just a storage area for their equipment and an office for the homeowner occupied employees and the employees that they do have that would be commuting to this area. The truck, I don't want to say storage, but the truck parking area to load into the building, you know, the loading area is on the opposite side of the building, furthest away from the railings, and those are on the north side of the building where the loading area is. There are four different loading bay doors with a small concrete retaining wall in between, basically to separate, to load everything in the building. I have been inside the building, that area is very large open space to be able to accommodate that, and there is a lift for the three lower spots, whereas the first bay door is at ground level there. So that retaining wall there is just to provide a lift for the trucks, for the loading bay.
Will there be any parking of trucks on the interior, is what you're saying? Because right now you can see vehicles parked on the exterior.
As far as I'm aware, all the truck parking, like the actual loading trucks, will be located on the north side of the building, and only vehicles, residential vehicles, maybe if somebody's driving a pickup truck or something, would be on the east south side of the building.
But there will be parking trucks outside the building, is what you're saying?
There is no vehicle storage inside the building. So the tent operation equipment would be located on the other side, interior to the site screened by both the building and the vegetation.
Would the applicant consider some additional vegetation to the northeast, northwest area, screening those vehicles a little bit more over time? And then potentially to the west or east northeast along that, which now really is a kind of scrummy hardwood hedgerow? Would they consider some pine plantings like they have along Galway Road to screen that out? So adjacent sites would not see the vehicles as readily parked on the north side?
I certainly have to discuss with them. I know Ms. Belmonte is on the call, I don't know if she wants to jump in and see whether or not they would be amenable to that. Teri, are you available?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
What, where exactly?
Okay, so if you, or the cement wall where the petroleum storage tanks are, you've got two trees, would you consider a few more there? And then if you came to the east side of the driveway, commencing like roughly where the northeast corner of the structure is, maybe a little, going a little bit south there, a line, I'm trying to look at the scale here, you know, a line of trees kind of similar to what you did at Boston Galway Road that screens that northern parking so the truck vehicles in particular wouldn't be seen from, pretty much from Boston Galway Road and or the property to the east. Any plantings we put there? Right now, if you go to the corner of Galway and Middle Line Road, natural tree lines are there, are minimum 70 to 90 feet tall. Once everything leaves out, you cannot see the buil-, you can't even see the building unless the trucks. Yeah, we can plant trees there, that's not a problem. It's gonna take many years for me to get the height of the trees that are already there. I don't have a problem planting extra trees. Okay. We can show you a little bit more detail. I mean, as of right now, from my house, looking out to the warehouse, I cannot see it no more. It's not visible. Any other comments from the board at this time? Okay, with respect to Seeker, we made a determination that this was an unlisted action at the last meeting that we reviewed this at. Are folks prepared to make any determination of significance associated with this project?
Got one in the-
I don't see anything in the Q and A section, Bill.
It's Nancy again, she had been-
Yeah, I just opened her up again, I think I may have opened her twice, sex. Let's see that, okay. Her internet seems to be blocking down. Nancy, did you have something you wanted to add for comments?
No.
Yeah, go ahead, speak up please, because it's hard to hear you.
No, I didn't have any comments, I was just, because I'm still not, I don't know, it's still, I don't, I don't know, I don't see myself, but maybe that's okay.
Okay. We're not there visually, but we'll be there. Okay, let's discuss the impact assessment on this then. We've gotten everything else, I mean, if everybody feels that we've got what we need for a completed application, we have a few comments here that were addressing some vegetative screening, and I think that's about the only thing that we had of a substantive comment to flow on this today. Anybody else have something they want to see in a next iteration of the site plan? If not, we'll leave it to screening. So I will read, and I'd appreciate if anybody has any comments or questions, that they speak up, but we'll go through the short environmental assessment form, part two, impact assessment. Question one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Proposal is for a small or moderate impact. Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? Proposal is to have a no or small or moderate impact. Somebody have something to say there? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Proposal is to have a no or small, moderate impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? There's no critical environmental area, so I'll say no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect the existing infrastructure for mass transit, like in the Watley? Proposal answer is a no, small or moderate impact. Will the proposed action cause or increase the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Proposal is a no or small impact. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or public-private wastewater facilities? Proposal answer is a no or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? Proposal is a small or impact or none. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, quality flora, fauna? Proposal answer is no, small or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Proposal is no or small or moderate impact. Number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? The proposed answer is a no, small or moderate impact. Does anybody have any comments or changes to any of the impact assessments? If not, we'll make a note that the determination of significance, that this project involves a special use permit for a home occupation too, that the building, the barn itself, has been determined to meet the area of oak regulations of the existing zoning, that what we're reviewing is the use specific to a tent rental business. We'll go through after a public hearing and eventually make a detailed list of findings that have to meet all our special use permit criteria and standings, or document how they may not, but that's, I don't see any other significant notations we need to make. I would entertain a motion to indicate that based on the information analysis of the impact assessment and the documentation submitted to date, that the proposed action will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion further on that? If not, Tina, pull the board. Unmute yourself, Tina.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay, Mr. Marstic Adam.
Yes.
Ms. Cadilla.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Vandanta.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Whittle.
Yes.
Chairman Berto.
Yes. With that, since the only comments we have are some minor adjustments with respect to screening and vegetation on the site plan, I would entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing for the Belmonte site plan and special use permit applications for 7:05 PM on June 18th is our next meeting, Tina? Correct.
That is correct.
Yes.
2020.
Okay, hold on.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth. Seventeenth, yes.
June seventeenth?
Sure. That's the third Wednesday of the month, right? You are correct, June seventeenth, sorry. Okay. Make that motion for seven oh five P M. on June seventeenth.
Make that motion.
Hold on, okay. We had, that was Meg Stevens, second?
I'll second.
Okay. And, uh, John Romano or the Belmontes, do you have a problem with making, uh, the additional site plan screening stuff that we had and getting that to us by, uh, no later than June fourth, I believe is the deadline, um, so that we can go ahead on that?
We do have a problem on the engineering and meeting those criteria. What did you want to hear?
Okay. So with that, um, pull the board, Tina.
Mr. Marstacano?
Yes.
Ms. Padula?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenta?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Berto?
Yes. Okay, so we'll have a seven oh five P M. June seventeenth, twenty twenty, public hearing on this. Um, I, I know that we likely will still have, uh, doing remote stuff here, so I want to make sure any of the public that's interested in this project is aware that all the documentation, uh, is on the website right now, but what we're waiting for is some minor adjustments regarding screening to the site plan, um, that will be submitted no later than June fourth. If it's there sooner, as soon as we receive it, we will put that on the website, and, um, everyone can either schedule an opportunity to go review those documents at town hall, or they will be available electronically. Um, there's quite a few up there right now, you can look at any of them. We will accept comments up until two days before the hearing, in writing, um, just to accommodate a, any concerns that people have. Um, comments on the record, who's speaking?
Sorry, this is Bill Lewis, I've got multiple, uh, questions. Um, can you please forward these questions to Mr., uh, this is Mr. Munner Boyhaven, they all just popped up right now.
I don't see any Q and A coming up.
Um, these, these are text messages sent to my phone.
Oh, okay, somebody.
Uh, this is my property borders of land with the new structure in view on, uh, five twenty Middle, uh, Middle Grove, this is all, it just popped into my, uh, text messages and went off right now, but they're all scheduled for Boy, Camp Boyhaven.
They're all Boyhaven questions?
They're all Boyhaven questions, I got four in a row. Uh, and no, nobody entered their, um, names, except for one was Colleen, my property borders of land, will there be any new structures in view of five twenty Middle Grove Road? Thanks, thank you, Colleen. Um, the other one, can you please forward these questions to Mr. Munner regarding Boyhaven property, and that is from a nine one four seven seven two number.
Okay, well, all these have to do with Boyhaven, so why don't we just figure with the Belmontes and then we?
Okay, no, I have, I have six, six, and they're all from, uh, they're all on here are for, uh, Boyhaven.
Well, we didn't get them earlier, but, um, just come back to those. Uh, so though that being said, um, Belmontes and John, John Romano, you're welcome to stay on the line, or you can leave, um, we'll speak to you next month. Um, that said, uh, why don't we take a couple of minutes and try to address those six questions that you have, Bill? I mean, it's unfortunate we've completed the review of that project, but.
Yeah, they just came through, I mean, one, two minutes ago, one, one minute ago, and again, uh, there's no names on the first one, this is, can you please forward these questions to Mr. Munner regarding the Boyhaven property? That's one. The second text from a different number, is my property borders the land, will there be any new structures in view of, uh, five twenty Middle Grove Road? Thank you, Colleen.
Um, okay, hold on there, with respect to that, I don't believe anybody's gonna see any structures from Middle Grove Road.
That is correct.
Well within the property. John, this is Joel, before we send Belmonte on their way, I just want to chime in on one thing, and I'm trying to give directions from the board and Bill Lewis. This app, this application or this submission was not referred to us to review, and I know that one item of the application did spur my interest, it was the, the new need that they had to do a SWIP, and I know past practices have been that at a minimum, if a project has a SWIP, it gets referred to the consulting engineer to review it as part of the Towns MS four program. I would, if there was a notion to have that piece of the application or other specific elements to refer to us to review, then we would just like to know that in advance. Obviously, if, if they meet the deadline for submission, we would obviously turn around our review in a kind of manner. So that would be something I think the board would need to make a determination and or bill as the stormwater officer to come. I'm fine with referring the SWIP to you, Joel. Uh, Bill, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that too.
Okay, so, so we will get that to you tonight or tomorrow? And if you could just turn that around pretty quickly, um, so that they can try to address any concerns you might raise in the SWIP. Okay. Um, beforehand. Did you have anything else that you?
No, that was it.
Okay, good. All right, anything on the, um, Munter project, those comments? I don't see any of those people that you're referencing, I, I don't know, have the phone numbers, but there's nobody with a phone number still on the line.
And, uh, a couple, the last one from the nine, nine one four number was high, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Munner, I wanted to, you know, what is the plan for the piece of property parcel on Shaw Hill Road? And?
Nothing, I mean, all the remaining property that we're aware of is still under consideration to be sold to the state of New York, but he has not given us any update on it.
And Mr. Munner wanted to know, plan of Shaw Hill Road, uh, reestablished property line monuments, current ones no longer exist, also, will the Boyhaven trails be open to the public? Can you please forward these questions to Mr. Munner regarding Boyhaven property? That is the last, oh, the questions, there's no names.
If you could just make sure you keep the text and put those into a document, and, uh, we can send them to Mr. Munner, but if there's no names, I don't know how he responds to the individuals.
That is correct, there's only, the only, there's only one text that had a Colleen listed on it, no last name.
Um, what we could do is ask Mr. Munner to try to respond to them, and we'll post them on the website.
Okay.
But so don't lose the texts, type them up somehow.
I promise you, I won't lose the texts, John.
I'd recommend losing the text, if they don't have the courtesy to give you, if they don't have the courtesy to give you accurate information to recontact them, it, it's kind of frivolous to me. That's just my opinion.
Okay, let's, uh, keep moving along, uh, let's continue the review of the Rowland Street major subdivision, I see Scott Lansing here.
Hi, good evening.
If I could, Scott, if you could introduce the rest of the team that's with you, just so we all know who's with you on this project tonight?
Absolutely, my name's Scott Lansing with Lansing Engineering, I'm representing Dave Triller, Jeff Booth and Jeff Knox, uh, for this, uh, project. If I could please, uh, share my screen, I'll, uh, I'll bring that up now.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, I think the, uh, the board is very familiar with this project, so I won't go into the, uh, intricate details of, excuse me, uh, the project, but basically, uh, there were, uh, three variances provided by the zoning for appeals for the project, they were approved, and those are incorporated into, uh, the project. The overall parcel is approximately forty one point five acres, it is zone R one, C one, and also has a stream corridor overlay on it as well. As far as the R one area, it does require minimum half acre lots with fifty foot front yard setback, twenty foot side yard setbacks, fifty foot rear and a hundred feet on the, uh, the width. Uh, as far as the, uh, the proposed conditions, the rendering that we're showing here, I think does outline, uh, very well what, uh, we are proposing, and, uh, just for the board's reference, uh, this plan really has not changed, uh, much, if at all, from, uh, the original presentations that were provided to the board, the plan is consistent, uh, as we have moved forward. Uh, we basically have, uh, two cul-de-sacs coming in from Rowland Street, Rowland Street is on the left-hand side of the drawing, we've got two cul-de-sacs coming in, the first one on the north is approximately nine hundred feet, uh, in length, uh, on that nine hundred foot cul-de-sac, there are eleven lots off of that cul-de-sac, uh, we do have one frontage lot on, uh, Rowland Street, uh, located in the approximate center of the parcel, and then on the southern end, we do have another cul-de-sac that is approximately, uh, one thousand feet in length, and we have twenty homes located on that, uh, particular, uh, cul-de-sac. This is a, uh, a conventional subdivision, uh, that we are proposing as far as, uh, water, storm and sewer, water would be, uh, proposed, uh, to be extended from the Village of Boston's, uh, spa water system, that is, uh, to the south of Rowland Street, uh, approximately two thousand two hundred feet, uh, to the south, uh, would originate from the John Street area. Uh, sanitary sewer would be conveyed up towards the, uh, north of the project, uh, that is approximately two thousand linear feet, and then on the project itself, uh, we do have stormwater mitigation shown in, uh, two separate, uh, larger stormwater areas. Uh, as far as the, uh, what we have submitted, we have submitted, uh, preliminary design drawings and, uh, preliminary reports, uh, for the board and town designated engineer for them to review. Uh, we did receive comments, uh, from the town designated engineer, I'll go through those, at least the ones that, uh, we feel are, uh, something, uh, that requires some comment or some feedback, I think the majority of the comments were technical in nature, we will absolutely address those with, uh, formal, uh, comment responses. Uh, the first one that I want to discuss was relative to, uh, water service, as I did mention, uh, we are proposing to extend the water service from the Village of Boston Spa. Uh, we have been working with them since the beginning of this project, and I have stated that, uh, capacity is available for the project, uh, source and storage, uh, are available for, uh, the project. Uh, we have, um, reached out to the town of Milton, uh, per the request, uh, from the village, uh, to, I get a letter from them, basically saying that they do not want to form a water district, they do not want to own, operate, maintain, uh, these water lines, that they are okay, uh, with the village extending, uh, infrastructure into, uh, the town, and that letter is pending right now, we hope to get that, uh, shortly to provide, uh, for, uh, the village. Uh, as far as additional coordination with the village, we have tested the existing system in the village, uh, spending coordination with their, uh, DPW, both pressures and flows, everything, uh, was excellent as far as pressures and flows, and, uh, we have prepared a, uh, water report and drawings, uh, outlining the extension of the water from that source, and, uh, with that, uh, extension, the, the pressures and flows again were great, and that extends into, uh, our project as well. Uh, we submitted a report and plans, we actually did just receive, uh, comments from their engineer, uh, Jason Engineering, uh, today, we feel those are, uh, technical comments, and we do plan to address those, uh, with formal responses, and we can copy to town on those, uh, responses as well. Uh, another comment out of the, uh, MJ Engineering letter, it was relative to threatened endangered species, that is a work in progress, we do have our, uh, our biologist out, uh, and they have, uh, done the study, they are coordinating, uh, with, uh, the appropriate agencies, and that is contingent on the Army Corps permit, uh, for the wetlands as well, uh, so those two are going at concert, those are a work in progress, and we hope to have, uh, feedback on that shortly. Uh, also is relative to, uh, archaeology, uh, likewise, the project archaeologists have prepared, uh, reports, uh, they are being submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office, and we do hope to have feedback from them, uh, shortly as well. As far as the items that I think we could possibly, uh, uh, work on this evening with the planning board, first was relative to, uh, waiver request, we did submit a waiver request. Um, as far as the, uh, the southern cul-de-sac, uh, there is a section of the code that outlines, uh, a roadway with twenty or more lots should have the second access point, uh, the southern cul-de-sac, as I mentioned, does have exactly, uh, twenty lots, are, uh, we did submit a waiver request outlining, uh, in the center of the parcel, there is a, a large wetland and ravine area in this general area of the parcel, uh, any, uh, opportunity to make a, uh, a connection or a loop, uh, would create significant environmental impacts to the, to the slopes, to the wetlands, to the buffers, uh, basically to that entire, uh, stream corridor, uh, so that is, uh, one particular reason. Uh, another reason is that we do have the opportunity, uh, the two lots at the front of the cul-de-sac, they do have fronted John Rowland.